It is seven hundred and five. According to our official sidekeeping, the Monday, October fourteenth, twenty thirteen, South Bend Council is now in session in location by Reverend Fred Preston.
Goodbye, yes. Gracious in God heaven and father, we come to be at this moment. We thank you for your presence here this evening, and we ask that you touch every member of this common council, touch the president, and every member of the council. And we'll touch everyone in this room here this evening, and we ask that you bless this council in a special way, or God give them wisdom and knowledge in what to do and how to do for this city. And we'll thank you for that, and we'll praise you, Lord, for all that you're doing, for all that you want to do. In Jesus' name we pray.
Mr. President. Mr. Henry Davis.
I'm ready to start, Mr. Boarder.
Dr. Burris.
Yeah.
Dr. Barnes.
President.
Vice President Davis. President. President Peter.
President, Mr. Boarder.
Thank you.
May I have a report from the Senate Committee on Minutes?
The common council of the city of South Bend, Senate Committee has expected that the September seventh, one thousand thirteen, even the council comment to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved, besides Eric Peter, Jacob Harnett.
Thank you. Motion.
Good morning, Senator. Good morning, Senator.
Good motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
The opposition. Seeing that we will proceed to Special District, thirty fourteen, sixty-seven, please.
Mr. President, the members of the council, good evening. Mr. Mayor, I'd like for you to come join me. I'd like for the members of Church of the Dallas National Catholic Church, State Mayor Stichel Two's come, and all of the members come, who've come with Father Charles tonight. We've spent a lot of hours together the last few times, and we would like to, again, congratulate you. As you see, we have had a nice delegation from the parish to come out tonight. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We were honored celebrating with them yesterday at the parish for the one hundredth celebration, and so we will continue the celebration tonight as we read this resolution. The resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, honoring and celebrating the one hundredth anniversary of the founder of Saint Mary's Parish. Whereas, the South Bend Common Council recognizes that on November twenty-seventh, nineteen thirteen, a meeting to organize a church was held in the city of South Bend, Indiana. Whereas, the council proudly recognizes that from the season of the first meeting, Prime Bishop Francis O'Doherty, a key organizer of the Dallas National Catholic Church, conducted a mission service on October fourth, eighteen fifteen, which continues to be marked today by an eight-foot marker which proudly stands near the church to commemorate that event. Whereas, nineteen fifteen was the year when the construction began, which it's being completed in nineteen twenty-one, and going to be a vital neighborhood anchor at its location of sixteen oh one, West Sapporo Street, for any religions to worship and to develop fellowships. And whereas, the first pastor was Reverend Basil Se- Seitka. Got it? The const- the- and the first lay offices of the church were Jezus the Cas- Catholics, who served with Chairman Jezus Zerzynski, who served as Vice Chairman Michael Pabowski, who was the Recording Secretary. John Wazernak was the Treasurer, and Edward Noacki- Noacksky was the Financial Secretary on the run of the parish. Whereas, the Saint Mary's Parish members and religious leaders have become known as illuminaries on many public issues. From when they petitioned the city of South Bend in nineteen sixteen to establish Washington School, said that many churches and the parishioners would be properly educated to work today of preserving this historic neighborhood. Whereas, the Saint Mary's Parish members continue today in the proud tradition of its founders through their many outreach programs, which included annual food drives, hosting community meetings, and meetings for many civic organizations, hosting neighborhood rock parties and community events, co-organized all of the Gateway Neighborhood Association in two thousand, participated in the application process for the South Bend's first reading seat program in two thousand and one, and actively participated in the reading seat programs until two thousand and eight through board membership, hosting meetings, participating in sustainability efforts, and having Father Charles serve as chairperson for two years. Whereas today, the Saint Mary's Parish is part of the National Catholic Church, PMTC, which has a hundred and twenty parishes throughout America, which is a non-papical alternative which places people first through their ministry. Now therefore, be resolved by the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the South Bend Common Council proudly recognizes the one-hundredth anniversary celebration of Saint Mary's Parish, which began yesterday with the solemn invitation of Christian family at a mass of Thanksgiving celebrated by Prime Bishop Makovsky, with Bishop Galiski, and Reginald closing, and continues publicly today. Section two, the common council recognizes and congratulates Father Charles, who has been the pastor of the Saint Mary's Parish since nineteen ninety-four, who is a third-generation priest of the PNC, and his father, the late Bishop Jezus Zawatowski, has served the church for fifty-three years, and his grandfather, the very Reverend Jezus Zawatowski, has served the church for fifty-two years, who collectively through their parish can reach this part of our great city. Section three, the South Bend Common Council applauds the members and officials of the Saint Mary's Parish on this one latest occasion as we celebrate the one hundred years of continued striving to meet the religious and social needs of its parishioners, this historic neighborhood, and that you continue positively contribute to the richness of the city of South Bend and their outreach programs which benefit the well-being of our entire community for generations to come. And section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor. And it was, again, it was a great honor to be at the mass yesterday, and also at the celebration. My daughter and I were there last night, and it was a wonderful experience to be there. And I tell you, like I shared with the congregation yesterday, Father Charles is truly inspiration. He is a light. He is always involved in so many of the activities there, and you go to community meetings and you see him, and his congregation members have been a key part of our whole city of South Bend. And at this time, I would like to ask Father Charles to please come forth and share a thought and the other here common mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Councilman Oliver Davis for introducing this resolution, as well as for the support of the common council. It is our pleasure to be of service to the city of South Bend, as well as to our community. We share in the same prayers that we want a vibrant west side, and it only happens through the work and cooperation of all of us together. We thank you for this occasion, which helps us to kick off the beginning of our one hundred and first year. Wonderful.
I've agreed, there's not much I can add to what's been said, but certainly I've come to really admire and enjoy the company of Father Charles and folks I've got to know from the church, and not only because you preserve a great South Bend tradition that I'm proud to be part of, of people having unpronounceable names, but also because you really are so deeply woven into the fabric of the community. It's something that I think we do like to celebrate on this hundredth anniversary, especially being just a couple of years away from the hundred fiftieth anniversary of our city itself. It's a great moment to take stock of those remarkable institutions that have stood the test of time, and I certainly look forward to joining with the church and looking forward to the next hundred years. And if I'm not wrong for a proclamation, I know one of my successors will be after the two-hundredth anniversary of saying there, as you continue to do your very good work strengthening our community on our west side. Thank you.
Anybody else in the church who might have to say anything? Ready up. Be good.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Hold, hold one second. We now return back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. What in the world in the audience would like to speak in favor? There's no opposition, council? Would we adopt this by information?
Second.
One moment, please. I have some comments to hold. Whatever. I wanted to say, Father Charles, I know your church probably knows us, but they understand that they have the gym there. I had the opportunity to know who you are on a personal level. In fact, you're actually my neighbor, and I've noticed that you probably keep your brass cut better than mine as well. And so, behind all that, you know, there's something you said about a faith leader who is also an advocate for the community, and that sets a very, very strong precedence when we're talking about change and creating change. You have spoken out on a number of occasions, and have been worked in the trenches to better the west side of South Bend, and you have been a strong advocate of that, and I salute you. And so, if there's nothing better else that I could ever say, it's that you are a true leader and a community activist, and you advocate strongly for your passions, your beliefs, and your values system. And I thank you and your church congregation as well for supporting you in that role.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hold, hold one second. We now return back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. What in the world in the audience would like to speak in favor? There's no opposition, council? Would we adopt this by information?
Second.
One moment, please. I have some comments to hold. Whatever. I wanted to say, Father Charles, I know your church probably knows us, but they understand that they have the gym there. I had the opportunity to know who you are on a personal level. In fact, you're actually my neighbor, and I've noticed that you probably keep your brass cut better than mine as well. And so, behind all that, you know, there's something you said about a faith leader who is also an advocate for the community, and that sets a very, very strong precedence when we're talking about change and creating change. You have spoken out on a number of occasions, and have been worked in the trenches to better the west side of South Bend, and you have been a strong advocate of that, and I salute you. And so, if there's nothing better else that I could ever say, it's that you are a true leader and a community activist, and you advocate strongly for your passions, your beliefs, and your values system. And I thank you and your church congregation as well for supporting you in that role.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Is there a motion, all in favor? Aye. All in favor? The motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.[933.56]
All things in favor, all votes in favor of the motion today. Mr. Boyd, will you please give second reading to Bill 50-13?
Public hearing on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salaries for the council members for calendar year 2014.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Personnel and Finance Committee had a public hearing on Bill 50. They're here this afternoon, and it comes with favorable recommendations.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, ma'am.
We ask that you state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric David Dieter. I live at 110 North 4th Avenue, apartment 104, 46601. As President of the Council, yearly we set the salary for the council. As been the past practice, since I've been on the council, I've recommended a 2% raise, just as a other significant purpose.
Are there any questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, at this point, we'll move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of Bill 50-13? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is not closed. Entertain a motion.
Move the pair of advocates.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Is it moved and seconded? All votes in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
I oppose the motion.
I think she's having a hard time hearing. You need to pull the microphone closer to you.
Can everyone hear me at this time?
What do we have microphones for? We had them the last time.
Okay.
I may as well be in this, do not have.
I'm hearing my best to speak up loud.
I want to support you, but I want to keep you in this room for it.
We'll do our best.
No more than three minutes.
Okay, thank you. We'll do our best to speak out.
Thank you very much, but you had microphones before. Don't they have them?
Yes, we can.
You're right, you have them.
Thank you very much. They should be up here.
Okay, right here.
At this point, I'll move the conversation back to the chair. All of those in favor, I think.
We do, we do.
Okay, so here, 53-13 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Boyd, will you please give second reading to Bill 51-13?
Public hearing on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the city clerk for calendar year 2014.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Personnel and Finance Committee has a public hearing on Bill 51-13 this afternoon. They come to council with their favorable recommendation also.
At this time, we ask the petitioner to come before the council, state your name and address, and give us a brief summary of Bill 51-13. This is being seen.
Let's say here, this bill, by state law, is required as a separate from all other elected officials for the free justice, as a legislative position. This requires a 2% increase, the same level of increase that was targeted for all city employees.
Are there any questions that council members have of the city clerk regarding his proposed budget? Seeing none, is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of Bill 51-13? This is the public hearing portion. Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is now closed.
I'm sorry, a favorable recommendation.
Is it moved and seconded? All votes in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
I oppose the motion carries. Bill 51-13 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Boyd, will you please give a second reading to Bill 52-13, please?
Public hearing on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year 2014.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Personnel and Finance Committee had a public hearing on Bill 51-13 this afternoon, and it comes to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. We ask the petitioner to come before the council, state your name and address, and to give us a brief summary of Bill 52-13.
Evening, Councilor Mark Neal, City Controller, with offices on the 12th floor of this building. Bill 52-13 sets the mayor's salary for the 2014 fiscal year. I request to set the salary at the same level as set out in 2013. Thank you.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, we thank you for your presentation. We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of Bill 52-13? Anyone wishing to speak in support of this bill? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, the public hearing portion is now closed.
Move the favorable recommendation, second.
Second. Is it moved and seconded? All votes in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Bill 52-13 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion, continue 53-13 to 10.8.
Second. Is it moved and seconded? All votes in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
I oppose the motion carries. Mr. Boyd, will you please give second reading to Bill 55-13?
Public hearing on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number 1019212 and fixing the annual pay and monetary benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year 2014.
This was a joint committee of hearing. I'm going to ask Dr. Varner, would he please give the joint committee's recommendation?
Sorry, I was just going to put.
Bill 55-13.
He was, he was.
It was a joint committee.
Yeah.
Yes, it was. It was rereporting ordinance for fixing annual salaries and with a favorable recommendation from the day.
Now, Chair, it's my time, but this time I'd like to make a point, because I am a member of the police department since 1975, other than, you know, the retirements, which was why I can't get regular pay. See no monetary compensation from my vote.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask the petitioner to give us a summary of Bill 55-13. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Mark Neal, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor of this building. Bill 55-13 is noting it's reaffirming the police salaries for the 2014 fiscal year. In 2012, last year, there was a negotiation between the city administration and council with the FOP, the Toronto Police, agreeing to wages and benefits for the 2013 and 2014 fiscal years. At the same time, the salaries were set for the chief, assistant chiefs, and captains within the ordinance, and we're looking for those salary levels to be affirmed for the 2014 fiscal year.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? We'll now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of Bill 55-13? Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is now closed.
Sure.
May I report?
Okay, before I call for the vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I just want to be able to say I'm going to stay consistent with my vote before with the FOP budget, and as well as these folks are not obviously a part of the FOP. I'm also going to state the fact that when I did do it, I was pulled over at gunpoint, so I hope tonight I don't get pulled over at gunpoint by not being in favor of this particular bill. I think our police department has gone through way too many things over the last several years, and we have not talked about that holistically, and I think that if we continue to pay, we're saying yes to the behavior that has been exhibited in the community. And I just really, I don't think it had a spirit of we continue to pay people salaries and wages, and all of these other things keep happening, and it's like, okay, whatever, it's fine. So, as a non supporter, I hope that we'll continue to reward that behavior, is where I'm getting at. So, I would not be in favor of this bill tonight.
Thank you for your comments.
I think the comment took your last vote against us last year, and we walked the vote, so I don't think I can go on.
We're now move to, uh, me members, council members, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 55-13.
Move the 55-13 to the council favorably.
Second. Is it moved and seconded? All votes in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
This motion will be sent to, I mean, this bill will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Boyd, will you please give second reading to Bill 56-13?
Public hearing on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amendment ordinance number 1020012, and fixing the annual pay and monetary benefits of firefighters of the South Bend Fire Department for calendar year 2014.
Over here, the substitute version, second.
Is it moved and seconded? All votes in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We'll now be discussing the substitute version of Bill 56-13. We do as a percentage, I come before the podium. I'm following the podium. He's ready.
Uh, Madam President, the chair, the Personnel and Finance Committee had a public hearing on Bill 56-13 this afternoon. It comes to council favorably.
I'd like to thank Dr. Varner for the committee's report. We'll now move to the petitioner. We ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Mark Neal, City Controller, offices on the 12th floor of this building. Substitute Bill 56-13, as similar to the earlier police bill, 56-13 is setting the fire salaries for 2014. The substitute in the bill is that we are modifying the fire chief salary to be the same as the police chief's salary for 2014, and we ask for your favorable recommendations.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this substitute version of Bill 56-13? Seeing none, we'll now move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of substitute Bill 56-13? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing is now closed.
Move the favorable recommendation, second.
Has been moved and seconded that the substitute version of Bill 56-13 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. All votes in favor of the motion, I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Substitute Bill 56-13 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Now, we'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 49-13.
Make a motion to continue 49-13 to 111113.
Second. Has been moved and seconded. All votes in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I would now entertain a motion to rise to the fleet of the whole, from the portion out to the full council. Has been moved and seconded. All votes in favor of the motion? Those opposed, the motion carries.
Going to have the gallant team, Madam Chair.
Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, Madam. The court was now in session. Quick, Boyd, let's go third reading of 47-13.
Third reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving the South Bend Public Transportation 2014 budget, and the addition of tax and fixing the rate of taxation in purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana, for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014.
Move to the passage of Bill 47-13.
Second. Mr. Boyd. Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Day.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. 50-13, please.
Third reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salaries for the council members for calendar year 2014.
Move the passage of Bill 50-13.
Second.
Mr. Boyd. Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Day.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Ready.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Ready, eight for one. Thank you. 51-13.
Third reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the city clerk for calendar year 2014.
Move the passage of Bill 51-13.
Second.
Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Day.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Aye, aye. 52-13.
Third reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting the annual salary for the mayor for calendar year 2014.
Move the passage of 52-13. Doctor. Mr. Boyd.
Dr. Furley. Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. 55-13.
Third reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number 1019212, and fixing the annual pay and monetary benefits of sworn members of the South Bend Police Department for calendar year 2014.
Move the passage of Bill 51-13.
Second.
Mr. Boyd.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Day.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
One moment, Mr. Boyd. We have 55-13, right?
Yes.
Nay.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Nay.
The vote is seven to two. Thank you. 56-13.
Third reading on the bill of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amendment ordinance number 1020012, and fixing the annual pay and monetary benefits of firefighters of the South Bend Fire Department for calendar year 2014.
Move the passage of Bill 56-13.
The amendments are listed in the report.
So, move.
Second.
And the motion. Second, Madam Chair.
Aye.
The motion of the amended version. Move the amended version. 13. Second. Mr. Boyd.
Vice President Davis. Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Now, the vote is nine zero. It was this. Thank you very much. Proceed to resolutions. Let's go to 1356.
Resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, setting a petition of the area board resulting appeals for property located at 818 Thomas Street.
Thank you. I believe we had a committee report earlier, and we discussed the pros and cons of this. Joining. Here. Joining.
I'm sorry. There's only an annexation committee met this afternoon and sends a full council favorable for it.
Favorable for it. Mr. Lyons.
I'm Mark Lyons with the Berlin Park Offset 125 South Lafayette Boulevard. You're seeing public care at the August 11th, 2013, meeting of the area board of zone appeals. There's a special exception of the best on a bed and breakfast during the SFT district. It's a bed and breakfast with a student break that I've gone to theme to it. It comes to the human animus for a more recommendation. Have an answering question to my head.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Lyons? Seeing none. Is that a place? Just need your name and address, sir, or just a brief synopsis of your head practice?
My name is Don Windsor. I live at 818 Thomas Street, South Bend, and part-time in St. Louis, Missouri.
Okay.
I'm proposing a, I don't know, a Vati oriented bed and breakfast, um, theme, and promoting the city of South Bend, adding a little detail, just a little plus to it, and I can go on with more details.
Excellent job. That's right. Thank you. Any questions from the council? I thank you. Anyone want to speak in favor of this? Opposition? Counsel, recommendation? Oh, President Dieter. I was just going to speak in favor of Don. Come on up. Just need your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Troy Frye. My address is 319 West Williams Street here in South Bend. I'm a property owner, a new resident in town. Uh, probably in the last year I got the opportunity to meet Don and do a little bit of business with him, and, um, yeah, I wouldn't be surprised whatsoever if his project turns out to be a success. He is, uh, I do a little bit of employment work with him. He's an excellent boss. I watched how he entertained the other contractors rather than employees, and he was very, he's been very dedicated to this project. He's been driving over from, um, St. Louis pretty regularly. He's invested a lot of money, haven't gotten any money out of his project, uh, and this is a big love of his. That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Counsel, recommendation? Need adoption.
Second.
Mr. Boyd.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furley.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. 1364.
A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the area board resulting appeals for property located at 1044 Bollard.
I believe we had another committee report on this earlier, didn't we?
I think we sent it to the, uh, full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant, if you need to make a disclosure, I will be refusing myself from this vote because it involves a company that I work for.
All right, Mr. Lyons.
I'm Mark Lyons with the Berlin Park Offset 125 South Lafayette Boulevard. This is the public care for standard 2013, meeting of the area board of zone appeals, and especially such a request at, uh, Santa Antenna and top other existing, uh, building. I would use the animus for a recommendation. Have an answering question to my head.
Any question for Mr. Lyons? Seeing none, presenter, just need a short synopsis of your project, please.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Wallace. I work for Five Corners LLC. Our office is located at 814 Marietta Street in South Bend. Verizon Wireless would like to locate small antennas on an existing advertising billboard structure on property owned by Five Corners LLC. Um, the combination of the three-foot antennas and the forty-foot high structure will make it a total of forty-three heights, thirty-three feet in height above ground le, above ground level, excuse me. Um, we would like to use the services of the Central Valley MetroNet, which runs along that corridor. They want to put those antennas there because they need improved coverage in the area, in particular, the Eddie Commons area.
All right, thank you. Any questions? I would present more. Thank you very much. Anyone want to speak in favor of this? Or opposition? Counsel, recommendation? Move the passage of Bill 1354.
Second.
Mr. Boyd, we will adopt. I have a substitute. You have one. Second. Mr. Furley.
I can't go.
Oh, that's all right. Uh, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furley.
Aye.
Dr. Varner.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Dieter.
Aye.
Eight aye. Thank you, sir. Let's proceed to 1368. Present. Let's, we'll do it, then we'll do that.
A resolution of the county council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 736 Calhoun, 1008910, 906, 838, 836, 834, 814, 826, 812, 840, an economic revitalization area for purposes of up to a six-year real property tax evasion for the New Northwest Neighborhood Inc.
Need a substitute version?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone to make a substitute version?
Uh, no.
Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Before we go to the committee report, Mr. Scott, just like to disclose, my wife Karen is the director of the Near North West Neighborhood Association. With that, I'm going to refuse myself from listening. Thank you, sir. Committee report.
Awesome. Uh, the community investment committee met today and sent a bill, 1368, forward with a favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, before we proceed with this, uh, resolution to that, I know there's emotions running high on both sides of this, so, again, when we're talking about it, let's be cordial to the people who are speaking. If someone is opposed to what you are going to say, that's absolutely fine. Let's just, let's be professional about this whole thing once we get to it. And with that, I will let our counsel attorney read the rules of how we will be handling this meeting.
One other question.
I wonder when I'm done speaking, we can talk about that. So, I will ask our counsel attorney to talk about the rules that we, we can hear into tonight.
Uh, the general rule is for the safety is that the petitioner has unlimited amount of time to make a presentation immediately after the formal presentation. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, uh, state their name and street address. We have an extra five minutes to speak in favor. Uh, at the end of that session, uh, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed bill, again, has a five minute restriction. It was also given in, uh, address. After that section is completed, uh, the, a rebuttal, a definitely given by the, uh, petitioner to answer any questions and take, uh, praise during the public portion. Uh, at that point, the public hearing is closed, and then it will go to the city council for deliberating questioning of the petitioner and making motions to disclose the bill of course. With regard to the, uh, actual law that's, uh, that's involved, just briefly, uh, the city council has, uh, rules and regulations that have been codified into the South Bend City Code, uh, beginning of section 2, N76, very briefly, that states that the council declares that tax evasion procedures in general standing set forth in this article shall, and it's our, govern tax evasion cuts for, uh, that are filed for consideration. Uh, and in light of the committee meeting earlier, I also would like to clarify that the request of Dr. Varner and Dr. Furley, that section 2-84-16 calls for the city council to review all tax evasion procedures in calendar years which hand in even numbers. The City Code, uh, regulations on tax evasion were last amended in 2012. This, uh, report from, uh, council member Gavin Furley's committee, uh, and he is the committee chair and extra, would be due by October 1st, pursuant to that section.
Thank you.
Um, for accurate record-keeping purposes, it should be noted that, um, it was actually sent to the full council with no recommendation. Um, citizen member Patrick Mullin, um, had to abstain from the vote, so.
The time was then broken by the question, for city vote.
My apologies.
All right, thank you. We have our presenter, please.
My name is Karen, so I'm the executive director of the Near Northwest Neighborhood Incorporated. Our address is 1007 Portage Avenue.
And I'm Nick's Aquatic Englewood Development Company.
You have to, well, speak up or these things with the microphones are not very good, so.
You don't get to use them? I'm Nick's Aquatic Englewood Development Company, 860 East 86th Street in Indianapolis, code of development for the Near Northwest.
Um, we are proposing, can you hear me? The slight loss. We're proposing an affordable housing development at 906, 910 Portage Avenue, specifically it's the Ford Distributing Building. That building in particular is a building that has been abandoned for over four years. It has not been generating taxes for many, many years now. There's over a hundred thousand dollars in back taxes owed at this point. We are proposing through a tax credit application to create forty-two units of affordable housing with one and two bedroom units in that mix, and we're hoping to submit an application on November first of this year. So we're coming before you today to ask for tax abatement. The one thing that I would like to specify is the money that is being raised specifically for that project is private money, so we do not sit in a redevelopment area, we don't sit in a district, we're not part of the central business district. The funds that will be utilized will be private funds, which is part of the reason why we're looking for this tax abatement.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the council? Henry Davis?
Sure. Could you please give me a brief understanding or rundown of the tax credit application process and what's involved in the tax credit application? What do you have to learn? Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Okay. There is one round held by the state every year to apply for tax credits, and applications are due on November one. From there, they take all the applications that are generated, and this year so far all indications are that there will be more than fifty for them to review. And those will be reviewed, and they will announce awards at the end of February. And at that time, if you are selected for an allocation of tax credits, then you'll start the process of putting together your equity partners and final review of the project and work towards getting permits ready for development.
Can you get tax credits anywhere in the city of South Bend or anywhere in the state of Indiana?
Do you tax credits?
Yeah, I mean, is there a requirement to get tax credits? No, that's not the question. Is there a way, can you get tax credits in any corner of the United States of America or the city of South Bend or the state of Indiana?
This particular tax credit is a federal tax credit that is administered by each state. And so every state has an allocation that they can award according to their own criteria. So yes, no matter where you do.
What criteria for this one?
The state of Indiana has a variety of factors that they assign a point value to, and based on that, could use that to evaluate which ones they think are less deserving of an award.
What's the criteria for this project? Obviously, you had to.
Just now that it is an adaptive reuse project, it constitutes infill development. It is near some recent infrastructure improvements, and those are the main things that weigh into this. And then also, of course, the tax abatement would be useful in that they do give you some extra points if there's something like a tax abatement or some other sort of local government funding or contribution to the project.
So are tax credits sometimes usually or traditionally given in areas that are, shall I say, underdeveloped?
Well, again, it depends on the state. Every state is allowed to decide whatever they want, and there are states I have experience with where that is not a factor. I would say that in Indiana, that is the case, and that the state authority, the state Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority does place an emphasis on developing underserved areas or areas that have suffered from disinvestment.
Okay. Now, clearly, we got a conversation earlier that, again, I don't necessarily even think that it was that bad, honestly. I think that that conversation needs to happen. And in the light of fairness, and, you know, me speaking with you in the hallway as well as with Karen here after the meeting, would there be any consideration to develop a community conversation, given a two-week delay on this particular matter, based upon all of the things that we talked about and things that proceeded after the conversation, and in the light of, in the light of fairness?
We are very open to a community conversation. At this point, we are not open to postponing this date because I have, I work for board of directors, I work for a group of basically neighbors, and we are committed to this date today to meet our application deadline. We are definitely one-hundred percent committed to talking with you further down the line, as Nick mentioned, that this is just the beginning of a very long process. So contractors wouldn't actually be selected till spring of next year, so if between November first and the end of February you wanted to have ongoing conversations, we would certainly welcome that.
Okay, and we want to get back at this again. And the reason why I ask that question is because there's always a momentum thing that happens here, and given our job requirements and how it works and time, blah, blah, blah. In interest of fairness and working with the community at a high level of fairness, and given the fact that folks came out earlier and was, you know, obviously participating in the conversation about how this could be worked out, and I see both of these things very, being very congruent. I see a happy marriage that could potentially happen. However, I just feel like that there is a level of, we're going to do it my way, and we're going to do what we need to do, and I believe that in not fairness, that we could potentially work something out in a two-week timeframe that will potentially, or, you know, would actually be a model for what could happen with the project, given the tax credits and the different things that are associated with the process of tax credits. Because am I right about this? I'm going to ask a question now. You know, are the tax credits, well, the tax abatement associated with the tax credit application? Are those things, did that need to be locked down on the application?
There is a direct correlation there, and part of it, I do respect what you're saying about that momentum, but you have to understand there's been a year-long process of conversation to get us to this point. And so the momentum we have coming to this point, we really need to secure this abatement at this point and not confuse it with the community agreement issue. We're more than happy to sit down and talk about that later, but right now, the application as it stands, you do get points related to public investment. And so we do need to secure this tonight so that can be included in part of that application. So it is not possible for us to delay at this point, but again, I offer you our utmost, you know, we would love to sit down with you and have conversations when we're not under this deadline, when we're not being kind of supervised by this agreement.
What is it due?
Pardon me?
When is it due?
Uh, November first.
So you do that time?
Uh, I disagree.
I'm done.
Counsel, appreciate it.
Thank you, I do have a number of questions. Nick, your corporation, Englewood Corporation, is actually the agency filing for the tax credits, not the NNN?
No, they are. They're the iron sponsor.
You, the NNN is filing for the tax credits with the state?
They are the applicant.
Okay, and you're, you are, it's Housing Choices LLC that will be the?
Housing Directions LLC.
They will be the reseller of the tax credits?
Co-developer of the project.
Okay, so if awarded these tax credits, and are you selling the tax, are you filing for the tax credits based on an eight-and-a-half million dollar project or a six-point-four million dollar project?
The total project cost is just under eight-and-a-half million, but the hard cost is about six-point-three, six-point-four.
Okay, so if awarded these tax credits, I mean, this is, this is an attractive vehicle that probably a lot of folks here tonight might not be all that familiar with. How much would you anticipate these tax credits will sell for on the market?
Uh, you know, I would say in this market, you're probably going to get eighty-seven, 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 eighty-eight cents on the dollar.
So you will be getting perhaps a couple million dollars?
Yes, we will be requesting, it'd be a little more than eight-and-a-half million tax credits, so, you know, you'd probably look to leverage, you know, a little less than eight million in equity in that.
And Englewood Corporation, because we're talking that, we've been repeating ourselves that this is private money, it's your company that's going to receive the eight million dollars, correct?
No, that's incorrect.
The NNN is going to receive eight million dollars from the sale of these tax credits?
No, we, what we are going to have is a, the new partner setup, setup that is the recipient of the tax credits, and what you do is you take on an investment partner, an equity partner, they will receive the tax credits.
And this limited partnership is going to be a for-profit entity?
Yes, in, in tax credit developments, like, since this is true across the country, most commonly the investor is a larger financial institutions or insurance companies, and they're motivated to do that by another federal law called the Community Investment Act. And those are the most common investors in these type of projects. For example, we most recently concluded one in Phoenix, it was in our Investor's Bank of America.
So who will, who will be the, and I apologize, these are, you know, complex investment vehicles that, I'm not rich enough to be buying tax credits, so I don't know about these types of, you'd have to have a place, I'm the one company for this type of thing. But, anyway, so this limited partnership, who will be, who will be the principals of this limited partnership, and who will be guiding this, this LLC?
There are two components to a limited partnership, the general partner and a limited partner. The general partner has operational control that will be Near Northwest. The limited partner is an equity partner, they provide the financing, they seek equity, and they are basically silent, other than that, they get the week, the economic benefits of investment property. But as far as day-to-day control and decisions when it comes to property management or development, that resides with the general partner, which would be Near Northwest.
Okay, so Karen, I worked with an attorney as I was drafting, as I was reviewing some of the things that came before us, and one of the questions that the attorney had asked is how, please explain how this project does not detract from the not-for-profit status of the NNN. Will the project remain part of a not-for-profit operation, or will it become a for-profit operation?
Near Northwest would form a for-profit LLC to be the general partner, and a member of that LLC will be Near Northwest.
So as a for-profit LLC, what's, the mission, I would imagine, of a for-profit entity would be slightly different than the mission of a not-for-profit community development corporation. So do you anticipate that you will be beholden to the same sort of standards that a for-profit would?
Our mission is specific to affordable housing right now, and revitalization and stabilization of the area, so it aligns perfectly with our existing mission.
Okay, so.
It's a single-purpose LLC, and that's, you know, the purpose of having an LLC is to limit your liability, and that is why it would be separate from Near Northwest, is to, you know, limit liability as any business, organize itself to do the same thing. And as a matter of fact, nonprofits are very active in tax credit development, some of the biggest national developers are organized as nonprofits.
Karen, for this limited partnership, other than yourself, who would be on the board?
We haven't organized it yet, we won't organize it until the tax credits are awarded.
Okay. So back to the, the abatement request, and I apologize for those that have already been here this afternoon, but I'll be redundant. The, the abatement request that's before the, before the council is a separate and distinct issue from the tax credit, so I don't want to confuse the two. So with the tax abatement request that is before the council tonight, there was a request made that would the NNN be willing to enter an agreement which ensures that this project provides some sort of benefit to our community. We certainly realize that any building will ultimately increase the amount of taxes collected, but we are looking for a more direct benefit. If this project goes forward, can we move a couple of South Bend residents from the unemployment line into the employment line?
As we, as we talked to you earlier, we said there's a four percent commitment to minorities, to women, to veterans, and so four percent of the project, which is a substantial dollar amount, will be allocated to that, so we will commit that to you.
Okay, the issue though, raised earlier by members of the minority community is that commitment has been made in the past and has not been met.
If I could just do a point of order, the trolling sections of the City Code, in particular, the community investment departments gave a recommendation upon reviewing the quarter inch of material that the abatement petition before us meets the qualifications for a three-to-six-year real tax abatement under section two dash seven, second, all time, and the residential development criteria in regard to a minimum amount of investment, with regard to a higher percentage of units made available for low and moderate income, and that basically would be three years, and then there's a potential for add-on, they disclose the criteria into the City Code per. There is no metness which adds, there are MOAs that can be added. Again, only placing the City Code for under Title VI.
Thank you for that additional information.
I would also want to add that I discussed my opinion with the corporate council, and she concurs.
As a council member, I still feel I have the right to ask the question. So the members of the community that had come forward have said that that commitment has been made in the past but not met, so how do you anticipate that this project will be different?
I don't have knowledge of what they're referencing in the past. I can only speak to this project that we have before you, and for this project we had before you, we're saying we will commit to four percent, being representative of minorities, women, and veterans.
Okay, I think it was the CAFRA, CAFRA report, but, you know, I guess I would appreciate, much like Councilman Davis just expressed, I would appreciate the opportunity to give this a further hearing on October twenty-eighth and schedule a community investment committee between now and then. Mr. Sorak had said that he would be willing to do that, apparently with Councilman Davis, Mr. Sorak had said that he would be agreeable for that.
I don't believe I said that, actually.
You implied it, and so. Do you have any further questions?
Well, I'll just say that I'll close with, the city of South Bend certainly has two significant community development corporations that we work with to improve the physical, social, and economic conditions of our city's neighborhoods. The South Bend Heritage Foundation is one, the Near Northwest Neighborhood is another. These are both not-for-profit 501(c)(3) organizations that are funded in large part through the support of the federal community development grant money that the city of South Bend receives from HUD because of our entitlement status. The city of South Bend is considered an entitlement city because of the large number of residents living at or below the poverty level in our city. The reason.
Excuse me, if you have questions, if not, we can come back to the council, use your questions for your petitioners now. If you want to make a statement later.
I was about to finish my statement.
Oh, you have, there's a question, you're making a comment on this. You have a question?
And I will continue my statement when given the opportunity.
Thank you. Dr. Furley?
Thank you, no comment.
Dr. Rogers?
The other thing I want to clarify is that you make the community, Near Northwest Incorporated, the Therex Group, and they'll be in a separate LLC.
Aye.
I'm sure we got the, that it's going to be the right group.
Yeah, we're not dealing with credit.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I, I guess, oh, I wish it was, okay, it's the right entity and not.
Correct. And last one, did I review of all the systems of council?
Yeah, I'm glad, thank you.
Counsel member. Vice President Davis, yes. I mean, you all spoke about a fourth percent. Is that in a written commitment, or is that something that you just shared, or where is that fourth percent?
That will be part of the tax credit application. If we make that commitment, that is a box, we'd be checking that, and that would be enforced by ICDR.
You said if you would be making that commitment, or are you going to make?
Yes, I will make that commitment, and we can put that in there, four percent, DVE, WVE, or MVE, as subcontractors or suppliers.
Will there be any need for them to make, you just talked about a minimum amount of money, what were you talking about, sir?
Under, under the City Code, the applicant will be required to enter a manner of agreement, as I brought two others that were in the case, and that's called a.
So.
But again, that has to be in place prior to the confirmatory action, that is a comfortable sort of proceeding that would be in place, a legal document prior to, by October twenty-eighth, and then a confirmatory resolution.
So basically, you're saying that if this passes tonight, you're saying how that fourth percent will be taken together, over one month. So that's fourth percent for minority businesses and women businesses, that would queue up, you know, that would queue up.
Yes, for subcontractors and suppliers.
Okay, which is something that I hadn't heard earlier.
I just heard the code, the Morgan and the Community Investment Department, the original memorandum of agreement, the city interns, office reviews, and those itself, with this commitment, they would make sure.
And that commitment would be prepared when?
Prior to the next.
So at the next, now the meeting on the twenty-eighth, what would happen at that meeting, would I need the bill?
It's a confirmatory resolution, again, like any other tax, it's just that process, the declaratory is the first that's sent, so.
So at the twenty-eighth meeting?
The first day.
At the twenty-eighth meeting, if this is passed tonight, then that commitment to the four percent for the minority, it will be a tax to that bill, and then if that is passed, then the. the minority, it will be a tax to that bill, and then if that is passed, then the minority business bill would be a part of that memorandum of understanding at that night, is that correct?
The representation that we had this year.
And Councilman Davis, I would object that what he's talking about, Indiana Housing and Community Development, if they manage that, so we could also provide a copy of that application that shows that we've committed to that, which means that's what we will be judged on basically if they're awarded, so there would be another double check in the way.
When we commit to that in the tax credit application, ICDAs, you have to document that you complied with what you committed to, and if you don't, you don't get your tax credit. So, you know, we have every reason to adhere to that, otherwise with that tax credit, you don't have a project.
Is it my understanding that that 4% is greater than what was even asked in the community agreement, or is that about saying?
Well, since you're a WVE, you count?
Probably never set out for it. Is that greater than what was asked?
The difference, Oliver, would be that that was asked specifically for a training fund, which would be, you know, separate and above and beyond the project cost, where this would be actually employing, you know, just like was discussed, actually employing people who need jobs and people within the community that qualify in those ranges.
So the 4% exactly actually put you deep in the dollars and becomes profit?
Yeah, it's training.
It's not just training and including everybody. It's not just WVE training kind of stuff, but this is actually putting money in some contractors' pockets so they can take on hired people, do something like that.
If you're ready to... If you're a famer, roofer, whatever, and you're an MBE, WB, DVE, or, you know, we're committing to hire folks that have that designation to do that first.
Okay. And that's all I have.
The City Code calls for a threshold, then the MOA.
I didn't find a commentary there. Thank you very much.
All right. At this point, anyone who's right to speak in favor, if everyone would, who wants to speak, everybody can get up in that formal line, that way we'll save some time. We need your name and address for the record. Since Tim Scott isn't involved in any of this, Councilmember White, can you tie him in? Dr. Furley, well, he's, just like the surgeries.
Right. Go ahead, Jesse. Jesse Davis, P.O., Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I just wanted to say that any project that was going to like this, where you're going to have a majority of private dollars coming in, there's always a good thing. Mishwaka just did a similar project with the main junior high building on Lincoln Drive, and that building, even though there was a furniture store in there for years, was still getting into, the outside of the building looked terrible. The city came in and turned that into some housing that's affordable, I believe it's for more, but elderly. But a lot of times when you have tax abatements, you know, you've got people coming up and they're asking for city dollars for the project, they're asking for this, and we seem to understand a lot of those tax abatements with no questions. So considering these guys are basically using tax credits and private dollars, I really don't understand what the major contention is with letting this abatement go through the last sentence down through the motives, and there's someone else behind the scenes putting some strings, wanting to do something else with this building. So I don't think it should pass, and there shouldn't be any opposition to it.
Thank you, sir.
John Mansburg, 735 Portage Avenue. I've lived on Portage Avenue about eight years now. I chose to move into the neighborhood because I really appreciate the work the North West neighborhood does for the city here. But my problem is that I think we are, we're trying to put too much out of private energy as far as, you know, training programs and things like that, things the city should be doing themselves. I just like to see somebody come in with private money to develop a building that's been, you know, several, just getting dilapidated, you know, getting worse shape. And we haven't had any development up and down Portage Avenue from downtown up to, you know, Cleveland Road, which now is nothing, actually, eight years I've worked here. And I think we should go ahead and, you know, prove this as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Ms. Quirrell, 4325 Garden Ave., 84628. And I have been a board member of the NNN often for over 25 years, and I am currently a board member, even though I no longer live in the area. But having lived in the area for a number of years, and my story is, I know that the Ford building is something that needs to be taken care of. We had a de facto tax abatement, as it is right now, because there are no taxes collected on this particular property. And apparently, there's nobody locally that is interested in developing it since nothing came through the safe that took place recently. So I think this is something that we really need to think about and have along. And I think the gentleman, the gentleman, excellent point, there has been a lot of development on private homes by NNN along Portage. Those of us who have lived in the area for a long time, we have seen some of the housing that really has improved and makes it look better, but there has been very little done from, say, California Avenue down towards the city center. And this would make a huge improvement in that area, and it might actually spur some more development in that section of Portage going down towards the city. So again, I'm sort of at a loss as to why there is this discussion even here about this tax abatement. It seems very odd to me that we would not, as a city, want to develop something that has been nicer, that would actually bring people into the NNN area with affordable housing, people who are renting, who might somewhere along the line be able to move out of the rental situation, and invest in and buying homes that are being developed and rehabbed by the NNN. So I think we would do the city a great disservice if we stop this project from going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Kaiser, 113 Diamond Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I've lived in the Near Northwest Neighborhood since I was six years old. When I was 26, I bought a house that had just been rehaved, not by the NNN, but by my little brother, on Diamond Avenue that had been condemned. I'm very passionate about the NNN. I think there's a lot of people who don't understand what Karen Ainsley and the NNN do. They think that Karen comes to you or to the mayor, and you hand them the blank check, and oh, giddy, giddy, let's go paint a house green. I happen to know that that's not how it works, that Karen works darn hard, and she has the backing of the neighborhood. Now, if she can put up with me, which we all know, I can be a loose cannon, I mean, Henry Davis and I act like we're two cats that had our tails tied together, and so I'll go close that. But I think we can agree that that portion of Portage is right at the line of marginal. And that I mean, we have the cottage growth redevelopment, but once you get across to the west of Portage, you deal with a group of people who we all know are marginalized. Now, as not an uber-liberal who's going to throw around weird diversity, when I'm living with everybody who's of every color and of the same educational background and socioeconomic background, it makes diversity kind of a word that doesn't mean the same, you need to start looking at the other side of Portage Avenue when you talk about diversity, where you're going to have people who are economically challenged, whether they are Latino, whether they are black, whether they are white. This housing can bring in, we talk about brain drain, we can bring in young people who are black, white, Latino, who are just starting to make it, and then they can say, you know what, five years down the line, I'm now making $5,000 a year, and I have the support of a neighborhood that is one of the most supportive neighborhoods in the City of South Bend, and works very well together. And why, I'm circumspect of why would we even have to go through this mess when everyone there on the council pretty much knows that that's the thing? Now, in the back of my mind, do I know why we're going through this stuff? I know why Scott Ford asked you guys to push it forward to the 28th, because the deadline is the first, and I know we're competing with the project that the city has. Is that fair, to put all of our eggs in one basket and crush this? I mean, ask yourselves that. Is that really how we do it in the City of South Bend? And if you're lying, then I got my information. Should I understand the karma still, which is at the White House, who called me from Mishwaka? And so this is going to turn into a whole real event, remember? So I think we really need to think about our activities and the economy, and we can both ask for state money, and maybe one or both of us will get it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Justin New, 924 Wheatley Drive, in South Bend. Just simply wanted to say that I'm in support of a tax abatement request for this project.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Griffin, 704 California, and I guess one of the things I can speak to is I'm, I live in one of the houses, actually, two houses, my house, where my family and I live in there, we have house next door, but they're the closest to this project. And we definitely are very supportive and hope that it passes through tonight. We really know well the need for revitalization, and we're in the neighborhood for the long run. And I guess the one thing I want to say, I actually want to thank Councilman Davis and Councilwoman Shay for bringing up some of the issues. Our neighborhood and the city, we have a problem and a challenge that economic growth is not shared. There's a lot of people in the community who don't share in that. And I was here this afternoon, and, you know, you can feel the frustration. I do think it's a little bit unfair that we rode all of that onto this, but I also think that what you just heard about the 4% commitment, just so you know, there are many of us in the community, in the neighborhood, who also, from our end, are going to be working to make sure that this is a shared growth project, that everyone in our neighborhood benefits. So I really hope that the larger problem that we have as a city doesn't scuttle something that is just desperately needing to be done in our neighborhood.
Sure. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Come on up. Can you name an address? And if anybody else wants to speak in favor, if you can, also steps up and get mine. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Anne Clark. I live at 831 Forest Avenue, and I've lived there 35 years. I taught at St. Mary's for 30 years, and I taught philosophy there. And in that teaching of philosophy, we talked a lot about diversity and conflict between human beings. And the reason I live in this neighborhood is because it's a neighborhood where that's part of our conversation and concern and interest. And I think that anything that the NNN does in the way of this building will have that interest in the back of its mind, because that's what the NNN community has always been. And so I think, I think you're talking, you can't talk about this in the abstract. You have to think about where it is and about the history of this community. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Kathy Sheath. I'm live at 922 Diamond Avenue. I was going to speak to you, a committee of this afternoon, too, and I just want to thank you, first of all, for your attention to this, and I hope that, I'm actually, I have to get this kind of fine-tooth comb, frankly, I need to speak frankly in support of this project for a number of reasons, that as a member, I live a block and a half away from this building, and I have continued to watch it, the two, from the outside, and twice in the last year, and also had an opportunity to tour the building. On the interior, my profession is as an architect, like it's any with a keen eye looking at this building, I really this is really a finest shot at basically turning it into a success story for both the NNN and for the City of South Bend. So I speak in support of it for the neighborhood, also in support for the city, and I would like to see this be a partnership, and if it talks about it, it would really be a nice show of that, so I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Andres Serna. I live at 628 Cushing Street. I live about three blocks from this property, and I've lived there with my family, four children, raised four children there for the last 17 years. I'd like to speak in favor of this project for several reasons. One, I think, as we all know, it's a burning building that is not short of this point, and burning buildings like that attract a lot of problems, and so development would be positive for our neighborhood. But beyond that, I'm really in favor of adding 42 well-managed units, lower-income rental units into our neighborhood. We have a lot of very poorly managed rental units in my neighborhood, a lot of people who live far away, who aren't invested in the neighborhood, who are making a lot of money off people, with poorly managed neighborhoods, and those who live in the neighborhood, we suffer because of that. We need good quality, well-managed, lower-income rental units, and this would add 42 of those units, and so I'm in favor of that as well. I think it would be a plus, not only for the neighborhood, but for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Mary Curdie. I live at 1023 Portage Avenue, and I did speak this afternoon, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I strongly support this, and as I mentioned this afternoon, I'm a president of the NNN Board, and they too very strongly support this project and the tax abatement specifically. I live, Kathy, I live a couple of doors down from this building, and I can assure you that it is a source of major bright along one of our primary corridors in the city. We've all talked for years about bettering the corridors so that the city and downtown becomes more attractive. People will be invited and not afraid to come into the city. So that has not been mentioned yet tonight, and I just want to point that out, too, that building this building would also take care of the source of light on one of our major corridors, and that's a win-win for the city and for the NNN and for our neighborhood. So I really encourage you to vote for this tonight and to pass it.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak in favor? See, how much time is your opposition?
See, at 14 minutes.
If anyone would like to speak in opposition, the opposition has nearly 15 minutes.
Reverend Brett Brown, 1230 Diamond, been living there 49 years. The tax abatement, 4%, give us the 96% and give them the 4%. Bringing jobs, trying to do things in the community, every time we give these rebates, something happens, and it's going to be in the city's favor, and we was listed as being a dying city. 4% is awful cheap for South Bend if we're only coming back up. Are we going to get employees from this city? Are we going to be guaranteed, what kind of guarantees is in the language? Are we going to hire electricians, contractors from South Bend that lives in St. Joseph County? We always say we're going to do this, we're going to do that. On the other end of Diamond, Walsh is working down there. We're not for South Bend. Try to be a contractor and go work in the cities around us, and they want 50% of their dollar put back in their city. We need to look at this, it needs to be some more explaining down in there, council board, before you bring this to the floor and vote on it. Unemployment rate, 12%, what is this going to do for our community? Is this going to really repair this abandonment on it? We're going to get a tax abatement? You look at the history of it, you look at A.J. Wright, we gave them a, where's A.J. Wright at? Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? See none? For any rebuttal in the opposition?
From the council?
Come in. We're not there yet. Any rebuttal?
No.
Okay, see none. The public portion is now over. We'll bring it back to the full council, and the other councilmen will wait and come back down on the board.
Can you come back to the...
Mr. Furley? Mr. Davis?
Thank you, President Dieter. When I heard about this situation and the comments that were made, even early today, when there was talk about the community agreement, it was pretty much said that it was no, no, we're not going to do that, or it's too late, or we have to look at... we're not gonna do that, or it's too late, or we have to look at it next year. I was very pleased to hear that about a four percent. Now, personally, I think if the four percent issue would have been raised earlier, a lot of the conflict that we had up here probably wouldn't be up here tonight. Secondly, like it was one of my colleagues that said, at the minimum, can you, um, can you have a minimum of four percent?
Yes.
Does it exist, uh, as per, could you share what that means with a minimum of four percent?
Uh, it means a minimum of four percent of the total project cost would have to go to one of those disadvantaged business categories. And I'd like to point out as well, that we've calculated out the total project cost, but the hard cost, which is sixty-four million, which is the actual, you know, nuts and bolts, it's actually four percent, translates to a bigger chunk of that. Because that, you know, the stuff that is a hard cost is, or soft cost, things like paying architects, you know, lawyers and all that other stuff, so there's actually more than four percent of the construction budget that would be going towards those disadvantaged businesses.
So, you're talking about more than a minimum of four percent?
We are at least do four percent. And when it comes to the total amount of hard construction cost, it is more than four percent of that.
So, you've done other constructions in the past, have, what is the year's success rate in buildings more than four percent?
That was a new category that ICD offered just recently, and so we committed to that on, most recent on Nets in Indianapolis, and we didn't have any problem hitting the four percent.
Well, then you committed to that.
It's like, you know, an eternal goal. I mean, we're talking about, once we get these tax credits and go through all the other process for whatever, we can actually build out a project, we're talking almost a year from now. And so, you know, saying that can make us commit it now, gives you a lot of time to try and figure out the mechanics of that. And we felt that was a reasonable amount to ask without maybe overcommitting ourselves, not knowing exactly who we needed to hire and who was the most qualified to do the work at the time.
So, is there any reason, when Councilwoman Shay and Councilman Henry Davis brought this regarding the community agreement, that this concept of the four percent was not raised and discussed in that light? And, uh, without?
We, we did discuss it this afternoon when we were in, but the community agreement, we didn't see that until it was filed with the clerk's office and became a public document. So, there wasn't a conversation that happened before that. So, that wasn't something that we were privy to. And so, we did mention that when we were here this afternoon, the four percent, but I, I assumed that they were looking at the four percent and not thinking that was enough because we had said that one-on-one as well. So, I, I'm not quite certain.
I think it's misunderstood, maybe the women's, I mean, in the response that was given to us, I, I probably would have looked at it a lot easier if it was said, well, we already done with the four percent issue, and like you shared earlier, that four percent not only is a minimum, and that does not include possible attorneys and other issues like we just shared with that.
Yeah, they hadn't, I mean, I, we had talked about memorandism of understanding.
It was clear to me, that was kept in, we can do that every day to 2014 and everything else. But I'm glad tonight, I heard a hold of intention, so I'm glad.
I, I'm sorry, Oliver, I think what we were responding to was the commitment for training, that we couldn't commit to that training as opposed to probably maybe clearly expressing the commitment that we would make through, as a natural part of that application process.
Because what I, I agree on that training issue, but what I really heard my colleagues share, at least with me, and they, I'm sure they're looking to try and explain it themselves, but they were looking at more dollars to take home for people, and because Councilman Davis has always talked about the unemployment rates. And so, I think the chamber were talking more about the training piece of that, you know. But in terms of what we were looking at was that four percent. I am glad to hear that, and I, that was news to me, because I've been watching the press conference about it before from the emails, and it was seeming like there was a strong resistance to that. But then tonight, I hear that this is a minimum of four percent, and maybe even higher. And considering what that was asked by Mr. Sheehan, I mean, he was asking for two percent, two to three percent. So, therefore, you are asking more than what he was even gonna say. And so, I'm glad to hear that, and I'm looking forward to seeing that in the 28th of October in that memorandum of understanding.
Perfect. Yeah, I think there might have been some miscommunication, because we were kind of caught off guard when that agreement came forward. And so, you know, hopefully, we can continue that conversation, and, and of course, we'll commit to the four percent.
Dr. Furley?
When people talk about the things that the council has to consider, and we need to consider, and we should consider, I think one of the things we also have to consider, particularly more than dollars or private dollars as opposed to grants or money in the form of economic settlement dollars perhaps from the city's funds, I think like that. But the, the less the city puts into it, I think the less restrictions we should place on the development process itself. So, I think it's great that there's a voluntary effort, which I'm glad the IEDC or whatever it was, has made that a category, because I think that will be appreciated by folks who are willing to give that sort of support. And to be ecstatic in the actual war, if that's possible, I think that's great, and I think if that happens, and when that happens, I'd like to hear back, you know, that that happens. So, I would hope that you're able to do that, and I wish you well. I guess the point we get there.
Thank you.
Dr. Furley?
Uh, thank you, Karen. This is basically a private venture with non-city funds. Correct? The government does a good job in what the government does with quality of life issues, water, sewer. The government does not do a good job when they start putting criteria and quotas on things as far as private businesses. That's why, one of the reasons we don't have the private business development in South Bend like other cities do. So, I applaud you for what you're doing, and thank you very much for creating jobs and creating a private investment in our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Shay?
Sure, I have a couple of things. First of all, in terms of the commitment, is it a good faith effort commitment, or is it a written, documented?
When, when we check that box on the application, that is something that we have to submit paperwork to IHCD to prove that we did what we did. And we come back to inspect and audit, have to make sure that we did. And if we did not, then we don't get, we don't basically get anything with adding any tax credits, and then we're gonna be writing a seven-figure check to our equity partner, which we don't want to happen.
So, and I ask this question because there's a number of legal documents that the city has to abide by on different projects, and in what we refer to as the bidder's affidavit in terms of inclusion in the project, it's, it's simply a good faith effort, which I'm always wary of because in certain situations, if I were to tell the IRS I'm going to make a good faith effort to pay my taxes, that profit wouldn't fly. So, this is more than a good faith effort, this is a concrete commitment to four percent.
The way I see it, looks at anything that you say you're gonna do in your application, you're gonna be held responsible for. And so, and that extends to a whole different variety of things, and say, you know, in terms of accessible features, we might say we're gonna include, or if we said we're gonna have a rooftop solar array, you can't just change your mind down the road and say, ah, you know. Not really meant to, but I.
But the, um, so, in terms of, is it your corporation that is Indiana certified woman-owned business?
Yes, the developers and property management owners as well.
Okay, so, well, the fact that you're a woman-owned business and you're a developer, a woman-owned business, do those numbers count towards this four percent goal? They will not?
No, they do not.
Okay. Is there any component other than the, because I think more important than race or gender is the individual socioeconomic status, which is why, again, and I've said it probably so many times, it is because there's such a large number of residents in South Bend living at or below the poverty level, that the city is classified as an entitlement city, which makes us eligible for the community development block grant money that we receive, which supports the NNN. And I, I apologize, I realize people feel that I'm being redundant, but I think this is a point that bears repeating. The fact that the NNN is a community development corporation that is, was established as a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) to improve the physical, social, and economic conditions of our city's neighborhoods, and because of the source of funding that supports the NNN, I feel that this tax abatement is unique and different from the other tax abatements that come before us. And I realize the tax credit that you're talking about is something different, that's an investment vehicle that's sold on the open market, and people buy it, and you would receive, like you said, the eight million dollars, or this separate LLC, for-profit LLC that will receive the money. But I keep turning back to the NNN, and I appreciate all the neighbors that have come before us, because clearly, I mean, this project will have a greater impact on their daily life than residents that don't live in that neighborhood. But still, as a city council representative that oversees the city's budget, of which a portion of the city's budget, which the council doesn't, you know, have any determination on how much CDBG money we receive on an annual basis, but it is part of the operating budget, I feel beholden to ask these questions. People have said they don't quite understand why we're asking all these questions about this tax abatement versus a tax abatement such as Federal Mogul or Tire Rack, those companies are big, not, those are big for-profit companies that don't necessarily have the same goals or missions of the NNN. The reason why the proposed community benefit, and it was proposed, it was, it's, I would ideally welcome an opportunity to continue this discussion for October 28th, so that we could have a meeting between now and a community investment committee meeting between now and October 28th, which would still get you and your application into the state by November 1st. But I would welcome an opportunity to discuss a community benefit agreement further to help, again, not race or gender, but the socio, the people living at or below the poverty level, and how are we going to get those folks employed? Because race and gender is distinct from income, and I think that the CDBG money that funds the NNN is awarded because we have so many people living at or below the poverty level. So, I'll close with the fact that I think this, this tax abatement could use some additional discussion and consideration.
Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, sir. I want to say thank to everybody here tonight, listening to this issue, and thanks for knocking on the leaves. Thank you for the presentation, I really do. The reason why the question has been asked is called vetting. The problem is, is that when we don't vet, first thing somebody watching says is, oh, that council is just a rubber stamp for the mayor. And then when we do vet, we're being obstructionist. So, I'm just trying to figure out where's the happy medium at, I guess, when, I guess we need to be friends with everybody, where the truth is, is that that's not gonna happen. I think that, you know, our job requires us to vet, and vet properly, and in that, in such a way that it's a representation of the people who have elected us into office. So, don't take offense to this, don't take it personal, it's part of the process. If you come in here and you ask for relevant subsidies, government help, government welfare, because that's what it's really called, when we get to the more economical end of bracket. And so, when we ask for these things, be clear and understand that you will be asked questions about what you're doing and why you're doing it. There's nothing against you, it's the fact that you're asking for something, and every time we're gonna ask something as well. You know, you need to be clear. So, but, you know, I was just looking on this, this list I have up here, of like all these local contractors that have gone out of business in the city of South Bend, and it's well over a hundred. And Oliver said something earlier today about an unemployment rate. Our unemployment rate is well over the state average, it's well over the five-county radius that we are within, as well over the national average. So, it would behoove us, and we would be missing the opportunity, all nine of us, to find out how we can, as a council, restore and keep some of that money back here in this city. We would be almost crazy not to do it. The truth is, is that four percent is very small. It's so small that it's only $320,000 of the eight-million-dollar project. That's how small it is. It's not even a drop in the bucket. I can't get a street of curbs done for $320,000. I can't get a sidewalk done for $320,000. So, that's how small it is. And so, when you begin to divide that up amongst a company of folks to get a project done, there would not be enough activity for that company to stay on that job for duration of the job. And that has happened over and over again here in the city. More importantly, in the second district, I have seen LaSalle Square project use tax credits, I've seen two museums use the tax credit on West Washington Street, Museum Row as we call it now, I've seen the Washington, we talked about A.J. Wright, and we talked about the Clark Center. And it's the same story each and every time. Each and every time, we're gonna use these tax credits, we're gonna ask for a tax abatement. Yes, you're using city money. It's called tax dollars. Guess what? When you don't pay for taxes that you're making, those are tax dollars that you were supposed to be paying. When you use the credit system, guess what? Somebody's paying for that out of pocket, it's called state taxes. So, somebody is subsidizing this through their job, I am, and everybody's here that's employing. So, when we begin to think that we're bigger than the costs that we're setting up and going for, we're missing the points. We have missed the point. The point is to make sure that money regenerates, do back to this community, so that folks like the guys in the factory or entrepreneurs can have more businesses inside, more business inside their business, more patrons, more folks who go to the stores, more people who become employed. For every dollar that's split in this community, there's always four dollars that's created. And that's coming off of a construction project, that's how those things happen. And so, for us to continue and sit here and beat down and say, oh, it's a bad thing, we're easy project developer, no, no, by no means. This, the project does not have enough those incentives. It does not. So, clearly, you need those incentives, if you didn't, you wouldn't be here. If you didn't, you wouldn't be here. I want to say this, the moral compass of this community has to change back to fairness. This country has to turn back to fairness. It's going back to fairness. And the fairness point that I'm going to make and I'm gonna continue to make, and I hope that you may do on your four percent. I would be doing four times, four times for it, which would be a lot better than what we have right now. However, it's up to you at this point. I'm not in favor of this anymore. I can't do it anymore. I just named off six projects that have happened in the second district or wide outside the second district, same population of folks who completely can step forward and step and decide each and every time, based upon the law. I'm not asking for anything that is not already in the law. If I was asking for something that was outside of law, yes, I'm not. But the truth is, is in the law, it's in the details. You use federal dollars, the federal guidelines, X, Y, and Z. That's all every day. That's why we are dealing with NDEWBE issues here in South Bend now, because no one wants to look at the numbers. No one chooses to look at the numbers. If someone was to file a federal lawsuit against the city of South Bend, guess what? We'd get a lot of trouble. Because no one wants to keep the numbers, no one wants to enforce the codes, and that is gonna follow repeatedly, over and over and over again. It's a fairness issue. You're gonna hear more about fairness issue after, after you guys finish what you say. It's called fairness. We cannot continue to act like we don't have a problem. We have a problem. And it's a true problem. As bad as one side of the community is gonna hurt, the other side's gonna hurt later on. It's just a matter of fact. It's all part of the same body, the same spirit. If one side hurts, the other side's gonna hurt as well. I digress.
All right, I'd like to make a question for federal recommendation. Second, good morning. Question to the top? Question to the top. Okay, sir. Uh, Mr. Henry Davis?
Nay.
Mrs. Sheehan?
Nay.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
President Davis?
Aye.
Vote is six to two.
Thank you. Proceeding to a press reading, a 5813 please. First reading on the bill, the basic laws of rights and products. One, first large satellite east of Durkham Street, west of Burn Street, running north, from the first east west alley, south of Fulham Street, for a distance of approximately fifty-four or fifty-five feet, to a termination point. Two, the first north south alley, east of Burn Street, west of Ely Alley, and the other north of the first east west alley, south of Fulham Street, for a distance of approximately sixty feet, to this termination point.
I would like, I would suggest, the most likely 813 is a corporate, a 20 seconds reading, public hearing on 10/28.
Amongst your seven all favor? Aye. In the opposition? Thank you. Proceeding to the next one, quick word.
First reading on the bill, the council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, pending checks of twenty-one in the South Bend municipal, adult, article on the basic provision, that new subsect in relative to three zoning areas of existing structures. Article two, residential districts to revise state's warning code references. Article four, industrial.
Sixty-two thirteen.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, incorporating twenty-one thousand dollars from the Palais Royal Historic Preservation Fund, number four fifty, for repairs to the historic exterior slash interior of the venue.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to send this to Parks for eleven, eleven thirteen. Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Thank you. Sixty-one thirteen.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, incorporating twenty-one thousand dollars from the Palais Royal Historic Preservation Fund, number four fifty, for repairs to the historic exterior slash interior of the venue.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to send this to Parks for eleven, eleven thirteen. Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Thank you. Sixty-one thirteen.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, incorporating twenty-one thousand dollars from the Palais Royal Historic Preservation Fund, number four fifty, for repairs to the historic exterior slash interior of the venue.
I'd like to make a motion to send this to Parks for eleven, eleven thirteen. Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Thank you. Sixty-two thirteen.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, incorporating twenty-one thousand dollars from the Palais Royal Historic Preservation Fund, number four fifty, for repairs to the historic exterior slash interior of the venue.
I'd like to make a motion to send this area to plan. Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Thank you. Sixty-three.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, making chapter seventeen of the South Bend municipal code, to reinstate article two, section seventeen, at three twenty-seven, all subject rights.
I'd like to make motion to send this to Utilities for eleven, eleven thirteen. Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposition? Next, sixty-four thirteen.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, making various sections of chapter seventeen, article two, of the South Bend municipal code, to adjust sewer rates and charges in the penalty, to one P seventeen.
Thank you. I'd like to send this to Utilities for eleven, eleven thirteen. Second. Motion. And we're segmenting. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition to that? Any unfinished business before this council? Any new business before the council? See, none. Privilege of the floor, privilege of the floor, there's a time where you can come up and talk with this council for three minutes on something we do not have tonight. If you want something specifically the council will refuse to, you need to fill out a form, which I believe are still over there behind all the media. Once, uh, you make your privilege of the floor, you hand that to third board, I will give it to a committee chair, and they will follow up. Counselmember Scott, you're back with the council now?
Yes, sir.
All right, he will time you. We need your name and address, and you need two minutes, sir. I will just let you know when you have one minute at the end.
Okay. Uh, my name is David A. Newton, I'm Police Department, South Bend Police Department, seven oh one West Sand Hill. Um, I wrote this address, uh, South Bend City Council Chair, President Derek Dieter. I am writing this letter asking for the South Bend City Council's help and obtaining a copy of the Indiana State Police Report, which was conducted as a result of the April incident at the Martin Luther King Center. I request an opportunity to review a copy of this report because I am the agouti party in this incident, and I want to know what occurred during this incident. During the course of the last five months, I have made my public statements and cooperated firmly with the investigation. However, I am disturbed of my, I am disturbed by the portrayal of my actions and the actions of others who were involved in this incident by Mayor Buttigieg. I was asked why I never complained about the alleged slow or no response from Chief Teachman during this incident. I believe bringing this incident to light would initiate requires us from the mayor's office, chief of police, and those who are instruments in carrying out their agendas. I also believe nothing will be done to correct this possibility of effect because of political embarrassment. I am sure that this letter will result in the reclamation of my career and payback in the future of some type because I am making this request. However, I can no longer sit by and watch the flip characterization by Mayor Buttigieg that this incident was, quote, "a munkhill being made a mountain." This statement shows that the mayor has no idea of the danger we face daily. This statement is a slap in the face to all cartwheeling officers, past and retired officers, and the officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice giving their lives in the line of duty. During the course, during this incident, a city employee told me a fight was occurring, and people involved in the fight were getting guns out of their private vehicles. There were fifty people in the parking lot participating in this fight. There were sixty children behind him playing on the playground, and approximately thirty people playing basketball in the outside courts. I called on the radio that I needed assistance, but received no response on the radio. I was alarmed to deal with that incident and can rest assure, if Mayor Buttigieg was at the king's ear that day, he would not minimize the gravity of this incident. During my police career, I have stood over two police officers that were fatally injured performing their duties. Corporal Scott Sevens, who I found in the parking lot, was shot several times and had days from his leg from his lungs. Corporal Rick Palazzato, whom I carried from where he was shot as he died from his lungs. Neither of these tragic incidents began with the emergency police response, yet, yet they ended in the death of both of these fine officers. Any incident in which we are involved could be our last, and should never be characterized as, quote, "a munkhill being made a mountain." In closing, I am asked, I am asking for the city council to step in on my behalf and use all possible resources to make this report more credible for my review. Sincerely, David A. Newton, I have a copy for your request.
Reverend Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight Diamond. First of all, thanks for Mr. Newton coming out. As we know, when the city of South Bend is unfair, and I've been fired previous to the floor, I talked to mayor on mayor night out about this same incident. And I think, yes, the mayor working for us, who's voted in by us, and tax dollars paid, and I think it's only right that this community knows what happened, how it happened. To see something is one thing, but it was on recordings at the Martin Luther King Center, but Lieutenant Ross and other officers went up there and erased it. So, yeah, we don't have it on camera, you can say what you want to. But after being interviewed by Sergeant Snick from Vapa Razor, Internal Affairs, State Police, he says, "I can't make a decision one way or the other, but I think it's a lot of truth unless you stand on Reverend Brown." And I can tell you, if we don't stand up, then you come in and say, "Well, this is what we should pay a mayor." Sometimes you have to take a stand, whether you agree or you disagree. I told Chief Teachman when I seen him, I said, uh, "Sometimes we make mistakes," and I told him to his face at the Public Safety Board. And he said, "Well, I'll get out of it, I'll be exonerated," is what he said. And it seems like he's been exonerated. What does that say to the community? I told Teachman, in my closing, I told him, I said, "I live here, you just visit." And everybody comes to the city council board, it doesn't stop right there, as I always told you. The bucket wake you up, I'll shake you up.
Thank you, sir.
Just a grievous, PM Box ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. Um, apparently, uh, in light of what these gentlemen just said, um, I guess that kind of sheds some light on what I'm here to ask. A lot of citizens have had problems, and we've all talked about transparency not being, you know, given from the fourteenth floor, trust, integrity, truths. And our city's kind of divided right now because a lot of these issues that have been brought down, some were cast onto the mayor, some have occurred since he became mayor. So I come to the council tonight because of the deployment of Mayor Buttigieg to Afghanistan. I did a lot of research, I brought you folks some documents from the Department of Defense, and when Chief Buttigieg ran for mayor, when he found out he was elected, he could have went to the Department of Defense, like a lot of people do that are in government offices, and said, "Hey, look, I've got a four-year term, can I file an exemption from going overseas?" Apparently, that didn't happen, there's a reason for this. So now, all of a sudden, he's called up, we've got all these issues in our city, that need to be addressed and handled and put to rest, and I am said, "We're gonna go for a year to Afghanistan." I, I would like the council to ask the mayor a letter, at length, "Did you volunteer for this deployment, and was it a mandatory, involuntary deployment?" That's the first question. The second question I would like you to ask the mayor, as his employer, either as a citizen or the council as his employer, we have the right to send a letter to the Department of Defense and request that they give him an exemption from going overseas on this deployment because he is a critical employee here, and so we've got so many things going on. I want you to ask him a second question. If we send a letter to the Department of Defense and they offer him this exemption, will he choose to still go to Afghanistan, or will he stay here and take care of business in the city? That's what we elected him to do.
Sir.
Senator Brown, six zero eight, Denver, P.O., Box nineteen seventy-six, South Bend, Indiana. You know, these administrations, from January to now, it's been just one Saturday late in our community. Nobody's seen each other. The police officers have come forth, uh, military's have came forth, citizens have come forth. I went to music school, no mayor, no mayor. And, uh, said, "Mr. Mayor, you should know, I'm sorry you don't tell him, I'm sorry you don't tell." I said, "Are you gonna let us see your letter of appointment? When you requested to go in, or did you volunteer to go?" He said, "No." I said, "Will you let us see the street police report?" He said, "No." I looked at him, I said, "Are we looking for you, or are you looking for us?" He had a comment. We really have to be serious about our community. Every time you pick a South Bend people up, they're something negative to be here on the side of the law, the school, uh, system is moving gears to the budget program, going up in schools. We're in trouble in our city. And the people that's elected in this city, the ones who are the people that have stepped forth and come out, that's why our government is elected as now. Because people decided to do it, or, you're not doing the mission of the community, of the citizens. So when are we gonna get back to doing what the citizens want? I would feel those two letters should be there for, and we're gonna be a day again because we're gonna bring them there for. The citizens should see them.
All right, thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Kurt Chinowski, uh, I am a partner of Catherine of R, One Oh One, North Michigan Street, South Bend. I'm here on behalf of a group of downtown citizens, business owners and tenants, residents. First, I want to show my appreciation to the council administration for, uh, some of the progress that's been made downtown in economic development. We've, uh, you've helped create an environment in which it's been possible for entrepreneurs to, uh, feel confident in their investments will be good ones, and I appreciate that. I also, the group that, uh, that I speak, that I'm part of, feels that the smart street initiative was a good idea. We all support the two-way street initiative, including the roundabout Porsche of that, excuse me. Uh, but we don't want the momentum that's been started in downtown South Bend to stop. We feel that, uh, safety is a major issue, and, uh, it should get the attention of the initiative of council. It was reported about ten days ago that the downtown patrol patrols and bike patrols may be, cease to exist because of our budget constraints. Uh, and then today, I guess it was reported that those patrols would, uh, would stay. So we're very appreciative that that will happen. We hope that they'll be at least equal to what they have been in the past, that they're, uh, we would prefer that they be increased, but at least equal to what we've seen in the past. I think that it's important for the continued economic development for the city. Uh, I think downtown is probably the safest part of the city right now, that we want to keep it that way. Our employees and customers feel much more comfortable when they leave work late at night and they see uniformed officers on the street. I think that, uh, we believe that it's important that for new development to occur downtown, that, uh, the, the, uh, fact that downtown is safe now, that that image continue to be that way, that we, uh, do whatever we can to create the safest downtown we can. I think we've done that so far, we don't want to lose that in 2013. Thank you.
Theodore Robert, two six one seven, Ferguson Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm going to start with a couple quotes by Mayor Buttigieg. Mayor Buttigieg stated, "At the end of the day, this should lead into the teaching investigation." He stated, "At the end of the day, this is a personnel decision." That's one of his quotes. Second one of his quotes, he said, "We're not, we are not going to break our policy on personnel records, meaning certain information." You've all seen and heard about my disciplinary hearing. But let me just say this, during my disciplinary hearing, the mayor's appointed staff took my personnel record and used it against me in a public hearing. Let me say that again. They took my personnel record, used it against me in a personnel hearing, they talked about things that were in my personnel record in a public hearing. But the mayor can say that Teachman's personnel record is confidential. See the unfairness there? Why is it that hit upon his staff to use my personnel record, that then he can go on and say Teachman's is confidential? Teachman and I both have the same powers as the police officers, he doesn't have one. The only difference that Teachman has is administrative powers. We share the same law enforcement powers. Here's what's different. Why is Teachman more confidential than mine? That's my first point. The second point is this, the same, um, offense that we said I broke in terms of the violation of the duty manual, Lieutenant Ross of the Internal Affairs Investigation went down to the King Center and began his own investigation. The same thing that they accused me of doing, he did. Why isn't he removed from doing it? Why isn't he, uh, investigated? I was punished for the same thing Lieutenant Ross did, okay? This happened in May, it's now October. Lee Ross has not been punished. Why? Again, unfairness. You have to ask yourself, why hasn't Lee Ross been punished? Why is Teachman's record confidential? Why was it, why was mine able to be used in a public setting? These are the things I'm asking you guys to investigate, because this, again, shows the unfairness that's going on. Thank you, all.
Sir, could you speak? There's a mic that's on, it looks like this. Sir, sir, we're in West Patel. And I have heard, uh, folks are feeling about Mayor Buttigieg, uh, the plan that is implemented, if he's willing to stand up for our country, I understand that, I also, he also accepted the office of mayor, as a city of South Bend. However, he's, he's at a double-edged sword there, and being on that double-edged sword and being an American veteran myself, I like a lot of people who have been, and figured out Mayor Buttigieg and then looking at his personal military records, they're assured by the Pentagon. And then, and a lot of, uh, few other individuals that say they've been in this city, uh, have served at addresses for thirty-nine years, that's, that's impossible, and we're incarcerated for seventeen, that's thirty-nine years. So, some of the things that are being said are not quite so true. So I think a lot of the things that are being said by
Foot and bike patrols get into the looks and kinds that police vehicles, larger vehicles cannot. And we've seen it happen on many occasions, where we've had to call in issues and problems associated with Howard Park and in the neighborhood, and almost the first responders, except in the winter, are the bike patrols. So, we would like, we would like everyone on the council to realize just how vital we think this is. We think we do have momentum going, as Mr. Janowski said, in downtown. We also have great momentum on the east bank, and we, and we think that the safety and the perception of safety is paramount, and making that momentum continue. Thank you.
Sir.
Robert Smith, president of Martin Luther King Senior Men's Club. I have two comments, one's on tax abatement, that the earlier project mentioned, it's a good project, but I have a feeling that the city council has a broken tax abatement, this administration, and the enforcement of it, and the administration of it is not fair. Like, it needs to be fixed, I don't know. And, 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 I'm willing to help city council to fix it. I have worked with several mayors, not in this state, but I know tax abatement, and, and if you want help, I will help you. Secondly, there has been too much time on police issues in this city. And the city council has not taken any action. And the action that, that the public has heard has been words, there's been no positive action. And I feel that at some point in time, as the government body, this council should take some, some action.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to talk to the council? Here, Jerry.